This is Call to Word, the Cohasset Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, August 25, 2015. It's now 7:01. We're in the Selectmen's office at Cohasset Town Hall. Our first order of business, as it is every evening when we meet, is a pledge of allegiance, and you're all invited to join in. A pledge of allegiance.
... and two three public... ...for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First item that we have on our agenda is an interim appointment request from the Paul Pratt Memorial Library Board of Trustees. Thank you, please. Would you mind introducing yourself?
Yeah, I'm Carolyn Coffey, and I'm the current Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. One of our trustees, Teresa Palimis, took a new job and moved to Boston on September -- will be moving on September 1st, and as a result had to resign her position because the bylaws state that you have to be a Cohasset resident to be a trustee. Her term would be up this coming May, so there's less than a year left on her current term. The bylaws state that the Board of Selectmen should please appoint an interim trustee until the next election. We were fortunate enough to have one of our library trustees, who has served already for four or five terms in the past, volunteer to fill her slot, Roger Lowe, who lives on Beach Street, and helped with the transition from the old library building to the current library building, and we would love to have him back should you all feel that that's appropriate.
Mr. Lowe is here this evening?
Mr. Lowe is here this evening.
Would you mind coming up? Mr. Lowe, good evening. Would you mind introducing yourself?
Roger Lowe, 110 Beach Street.
Okay, and just as a matter of formality, are you a registered voter?
Aye.
Which would be required in order to serve the board. Who has questions?
I just wonder, is this a joint appointment, or do we appoint it? Because it's an elected position.
It's a joint appointment.
It's a joint appointment, so they need to be called. I think they need to call a meeting to order.
Fair enough. Then in that case, Carolyn, I apologize.
No problem.
I gave you some other information. If you'd bring your board forward and simply call your meeting to order.
Okay.
The entire audience is now...
This looks like a vote committee.
It's a nice group, no, no. All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Paul Pratt Memorial Library.
Could we meet them? I don't know.
Introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm David Dwyer.
How do you do, David?
Steve Brown.
Steve.
Mary Lou Lawrence.
Stand by, Mary.
Mary Lou Lawrence.
Mary, yeah.
Lynn DeJocamo.
Lynn.
Jim Sandel.
Nice to meet you all, thank you.
What a crowd. Nice to be here.
So, as you're aware, this is a matter for the joint boards to appoint. So if I may, I'll turn this back to you. Mr. Lowe has been presented as the nominee. If we may, can we ask your Board of Trustees to weigh in on the matter?
Does anyone have any comment that we'd like to make one way or the other? Is there any discussion?
Well, we hold hardly support Roger's appointment to poll the decency.
If there's no further comment, then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Are there further questions from our board?
No.
I'll entertain a motion for Mr. Lowe's appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Lowe to the interim position until May 2016.
Second.
Okay, hearing the motion in a second, take a roll call vote.
Any conversation?
Don't have any. Welcome aboard. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Okay, by law.
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Karen Quigley, aye.
Steve Glummer, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Sherwin, aye.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you, guys, sir. Thank you all of you for serving.
Well done.
Motion to adjourn on your way out the door. Take care, guys. All right, next up is public comment. There's one here for -- anyone here for public comment. Now's the time.
Awesome. Hi, good afternoon.
Before you approach, please sign in over here. Oh, I'm sorry. Is someone already signed in?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, by order of sign-in, then please approach.
My name is Michael Sardina. I live at 271 South Main Street, Cohasset. And an article in last week's paper caught my eye because it's been something I was thinking about, which is Sandy Beach.
Oh, yes.
Robin Lawrence, who I don't know, came before you to discuss sand blowing off the beach. I've lived in Cohasset for 10 years, and I'm a Wade fisherman in Little Harbor. And I can tell you without any question, Little Harbor is filling in. The channels are much shallower, they're less prevalent. The area immediately opposite the beach parking lot is probably at least a foot and a half inch shallower than it used to be 10 years ago. The ecosystem is changing, and I think that this sand and beach and snow fence issue that is being discussed regarding Sandy Beach is a bigger issue than just Sandy Beach. I think that the ecosystem is fragile. As the water warms in that shallow water, it changes the entire ecosystem. And obviously, there's millions and millions of dollars worth of homes around that pond, and it is something that should be taken quite seriously. I don't think anybody would probably assume that there's any possibility of doing something after the fact in there, like dredging or doing anything just relative to the regulatory issues, et cetera, et cetera, to track preserve it. This past year, this past summer, is considerably different than last summer in Little Harbor as far as the amount of sand that has blown into the areas. You can see by the size of the doom just on the west side of the road, that it's almost three feet high. In one respect, that's a good thing because it helps stop the sand in the road. But sand gets over, it's blowing into that big basin just immediately beyond, and that is flushing into all the channels and everything else. So I'm only bringing this to your attention because I think it's something that should be addressed. It might be something that deserves some kind of review from a consultancy, not just a couple three-foot fences to keep the sand in during the resters, et cetera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sardina. We believe we referred the question out after Rob's commentary to Brian Joyce. Would you mind incorporating some of the concerns expressed here? I want to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hi, my name's Paul Currie, 461 Chief Justice.
I'm Josh Stein.
And our families are on the way, and we represent some families here in Cohasset.
Josh Stein, excuse me, is from where?
30 Hammond Street, 30 and Ave., sorry.
And we're concerned about the way Garrett Bradley's voting for us. And we've sent along some recent legislation that is filed on behalf of the Kinder Morgan Tennessee Pipeline that's going to build -- has anybody here ever heard of Sinsfield, Sinsfield, Mass? You've heard of it? Okay.
Family in the West Side.
Okay. Do you think the town of Cohasset has any business or any right in that town to tell them if they should be able to frac there? Us here in Cohasset, our families don't think we have that right to impede, imprint, and infringe our laws on theirs. This is unprecedented, that a state legislator would file a bill for fracking in a community where they don't want it. Their state representatives would not file the bill. None of their representatives would file the bill. Our representative filed the bill in our names, and we're horrified that somebody from a community of 997 people, where the average person makes $27,000 a year, that our town would come in and tell them what to do. We wouldn't want them infringing on our rights and our beautiful coastlines. This is unprecedented, that a legislator would file a bill in any kind of jurisdiction. There's been odd pieces, and I would hope that some of you guys would read some of these things from Northfield and other communities that have asked our legislators why they're going to frac. Fracking is very dangerous. I hope that people would -- it takes in a lot of natural resources, a lot of water, a lot of chemicals get put into the ground, creates earthquakes. These are the things that we are imposing on other communities. You know, I say this again, I don't think our state legislator is in tune with the way that our values are here in Cohasset. And I would like to send an apology letter or a statement to the folks over in the Berchtesh of Sandersfield and let them know that our community will stand up for their community and know that we don't represent that. The town of Cohasset, I feel like, has been wronged with Garrett Bradley as far as gambling. He's voted for gambling. He's voted for Speaker for Life. And I don't think that he's really been in the interest of our town. I say this with all due respect to him. I've known him since he was in college. I respect him as a person. However, I don't believe that he's in the same value system as I am here in Cohasset. Matter of fact, as a small businessman father, he makes my job very difficult in the way he votes. And I'd like this board to recognize that here in Cohasset, we haven't seen Mr. Bradley. I would ask you, when the last time he was here, as far as any questions to regard to the town? Here's our state representative. Has he been here?
Actually, he's here pretty frequently, and I appreciate your commentary and your passion for it. One of the things that I do want to make clear is that there is nothing unprecedented about an elected representative representing legislation for any particular place in a state, or for that matter federally. Next, with respect to whether or not he represents us, one of the things that we hold dear here within this body is setting the agenda. I heard this morning on WATD that you were on our agenda, which surprised the daylights out of me because I don't see it here. Matter of fact, I don't think anyone ever talked to us about it.
Yeah, well...
So I don't like our agenda being set publicly, which is frankly an embarrassment to my colleagues and myself. While we appreciate your passion for the commentary, I respectfully suggest that your comments be best directed to Mr. Bradley's office.
We've tried that.
As opposed to here, we are all, each of us, allowed to vote our conscience directly every two years for our state representative. And it would be unfair of me to open this conversation up any further to ask this body, without further deliberation, and it's not on the agenda to do so, to pen any letter condemning him for actions that frankly are rightful within his duties as a legislator.
Well, I would say that you're in the minority on this, but number one...
I don't mind if you're in the minority.
Number two is, I didn't set the agenda, just so you know.
No, you didn't. That's the point.
I didn't say that we were on the agenda. I had asked, I walked in yesterday, and I asked if I could put it...
Mr. Currie, I'm going to stop you right here. I heard the broadcast. I was called asking about this.
Okay.
So from that perspective, I simply make the point. We appreciate your comments, and thank you very much. If you have a question, it's fine, but I don't intend to deliberate anything.
No, I don't intend to deliberate anything either. I would just like to say that while I'm in agreement with the Chair that if this topic is discussed, it needs to be an agenda item. I have sat in that chair and brought forward issues that I felt very passionately about, which members of the then Board of Selectmen did not. And I feel very passionately about the ability of any citizen in this town to be able to come forward in public comment time and express their opinion, whether the majority of this board agrees with them or not.
And I believe that that has been all of it.
Yes, and just for the record again, you know, I'm not, I take living in this town very seriously. I mean, I've run for office in this town. I've done a lot of public service in this town. I have three sub-schoolchildren in this town, and I've got to say that I have no idea. I came here asking it to be on the agenda, and that's my, that was my, and I'm asking you, can I put this on the agenda?
We'll consider it for a spot on the agenda as a conversation, but I assume...
And that's all...
What I assume you're asking for, however, is a deliberation as to whether or not the board would take a position in making comment to Garrett Bradley with respect to this legislation. Is that the case?
Well, I'm just trying to have a conversation on basically, do we have the right as a town to, and you're saying it's okay to do that?
We, as a town, don't elect Garrett Bradley. Garrett Bradley has a district. We are one part of that district.
Right.
We aren't enforcing anything. This town has no official action with respect to any law that the state is contemplating. So there is no action that the town makes or is enforcing, okay? We simply vote individually or our elected representatives.
Kevin, just a quick clarification. From what I understand, this legislation, Representative Bradley didn't file this on our behalf on Cohasset, just so because people are listening to this.
Yeah, well, he represents us.
Let me finish. You know, he's our representative, but I mean, he filed it on his own. He wasn't doing it on behalf of Cohasset. And I think, the other thing is, I do applaud your public participation and your wanting to bring up discussions and so forth. There are other forums than this. You can always rent the library, I mean, hold the, reserve the library, hold a public forum on a subject like this or anything else you want. I mean, those things are all encouraged. That's what a public library is for. We have a commons.
Right.
You can go out and talk about the commons.
I appreciate that.
And so you're all welcome to express yourself in any way that you can. I would support what the Chair is saying in that it is not necessary for us to be deliberating and voting on what a representative does, at least on this particular issue. But there's plenty of ways for you to express yourself, and I would applaud your public participation.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Kevin. I appreciate the board for taking the time and listening to us publicly. And, you know, I do respect what you do, and I want to thank you for all your hard service in the town of Cohasset.
And thank you for yours.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Josh.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Selectmen's update.
No, I'm fine.
A while ago, a Boy Scout came before us with a project, putting a bench and cleaning up an area up by the reservoir. And I have been up there. The area has been cleaned up. And the bench is in place. He did a magnificent job in doing it. If ever there was a place that needed a bench, it's there. It's beautiful. It's unfortunate, though, that it's only been there a short period of time, and already there's been vandalism. And the area, which was spick and span clean routinely, is littered with pizza boxes in the trees and broken glass. And Tanner and I take garbage out. There's a dog walker who goes in there, and she comes out with two or three bags of garbage at a time that she picks up. It's really sad because it's a beautiful area that people come, they go, there's fishing there. People just sit and relax and enjoy the area. Some people come and sit there and read. And it's just a sad, to me, anyway. The other thing that I find, as an environmentalist, but also just as an individual, is that people set fires there, and they use the roots of the trees to contain the fires. So the fires are licking, destroying the roots of the trees and licking up. And recently, somebody has been there with a hatchet trying to cut down some scrub oaks.
Where is this exactly?
This is, it's up, it's town property. I don't know, it's water department held property. It's right up by the reservoir at the end of Beachwood Street. And it's very heavily used by families and people.
This is all the way to the end?
If you go all the way to the end, you can't go any further. The dam is in front of you, and you can either go up and cross over the dam or take the path to the right. And when you go up in there, if you go left when you reach the top of the path, there's a very beautiful little area in there, and that's where the bench is. He also put up a kiosk, which has a map of the area and some other information on it. So I just wanted to say that he had done a terrific job, and I just would urge people to have more respect for the efforts of others. That's it.
That's, thank you for recognizing the work of still another Eagle Scout. And, yeah, that's fairly disappointing for our community that that's the condition it's in. Diane?
I wasn't going to say anything because I just got back to town, but Karen reminded me of the whole pizza box situation, so I want to commend the DPW in the town for putting out a receptacle for pizza boxes at Sandy Beach. But I wouldn't like to kind of piggyback on the personal responsibility aspect of enjoying our beautiful town. If the pizza box is filled or if the trash barrels are filled, it's probably a good idea just to take your trash home with you or your pizza box is home with you. I was at the beach the other morning walking, and the DPW guys were there. I think it was a Saturday or Sunday. It was definitely on the weekend. And they were coming through just piling probably 50, 60 pizza boxes into the back of the truck, and they said it was their second trip there that morning. They had taken a whole bunch of trash from the beginning of the beach and then went down the other end, and there was still just piles and piles next to that. And I just think, you know, at some point, it's not a big deal to throw the pizza box and the trash in the back of your car and bring it home and dispose of it. So on this, on this pattern, that's all I have to say, is pick up after yourselves.
So all I have to say is that the Constitution Commission and the Surfer Committee over the past week, both were very in- secular meetings. And the other question I have is, the bench at the library in the basketball court, is that town bench? I've heard of a bench. That bench also has been vandalized. There are two of them there, and there was only one there. I'm not sure who was responsible for those benches.
Is it within the playground?
Yeah, it's in the basketball court. That's where my daughter's at.
Ask Ted if there's something going on with him. My only comment is that this past week, the yacht club in the town hosted the 210 Nationals. 210 is a type of sailboat, for those people who don't know, that was designed and built by a guy named Ray Hunt, who frankly ran much of the production for that boat and the predecessor to it right here in Cohasset or what was then Cohasset Colonies. As a boat, it's relatively elegant for something that looks an awful lot like a canoe with a sail. And to this day, its design remains valid such that it's one of the fastest class boats on the water. But like a fine piece of equipment, it's easy to sail and very difficult to sail well. And that personal challenge is at a point where the 210s are slowly but surely beginning to go away as a type of boat. Nonetheless, some of the finest sailors in the world learned to sail on them, continue to sail on them, and one of our own, Wiley Wakeman, for the first time won the national championship.
Wow.
And, you know, that's no small feat. In any case, we've had several champions from Cohasset, not the least of which was his father, Sam Wakeman. And so I want to congratulate Wiley and his crew certainly for playing a win. But just as importantly, recognize that some of the innovation that came to a sport of sailing, which while many people look at it as one of entitlement, I have to tell you, if you've ever been around any kind of sailboat racing for any amount of time, you recognize that it is hardly that, especially at the one design level. You find the most down-to-earth, average, normal people you'd ever want to meet. Maybe a little harder drinking than maybe, but very nice folks. And I also want to extend thanks to Lord Givens for keeping the harbor together during that week. It's not easy when you've got a parade of sailboats running in and out of the harbor on a regular basis, weather-dependent, and you're going to face the potential for an emergency call at any moment, which I suspect probably happened during the week at some point. So thank you once again, and congratulations again to all the crews, some of which came from as far away as Michigan this time. So, all right, that's it from me. We'll move on to the town manager.
Just have a couple of quick things, and I will introduce momentarily Paula Norris for a brief investment update. She's part of the board tonight. I am going to be attending a New England Government Finance Officers Conference next week in Boston, part of a couple of days. Yes, it's absolutely exciting, end of summer stuff. And among the sessions I'm planning to attend, this one focusing on municipal credit ratings, which is another super exciting, but important one, which is sponsored by the Townsbury University State and Board. So we actually have a meeting internally to talk about that whole issue among other things. It should be a bit refresher and update. So I will be in the office, but, you know, out periodically Monday, Tuesday. I plan to attend a couple of sessions, but I'll still be around. Probably be in the office, at least part of a couple of days, and in the evenings, too. And just a quick update, I know there was a story in the paper during the short time I was away, and I've asked DPW to follow the national grid, the scope and status of any open gas leaks in town. I know there was one of these statistical analyses which claims Cohasset is the weakest place in the state, which is just like we're the fastest-growing community in the state. I keep looking for those moving vans that keep rolling into town. And there's a question, our demographics are changing. We're not, you know, we're not Arizona or Florida at this point.
I think that's the second year in a row that that same piece of information came out at the same time based on the same year's worth of data, so...
Right, all right. I just, they can just set us a tax bill. They don't have to move it to town. But so, and I've also spoken with Chief Sylvie. I spoke with her last week about this. And he tells me there are no active leaks of which he was aware, which present any current danger to rental property. So, you know, they do monitor this closely. They give reports. But, you know, the project that will begin in a couple of weeks will address, I think, a very significant part of the oldest pipe in town in the downtown village area. And I know that they have ongoing plans to do national grid to adjust, perhaps in the stretch and a couple of response. We'll certainly stay on top of that. Just a swan to let people know that definitely watching that. So I'd like to call it Paula. A quick update on investments.
Hi.
Hi.
You. I trust that you've gotten the investment reports in your packets.
Indeed.
Not a fun quarter to be reporting on, sadly. I think everything, just about everything is down. Most of them, one was slightly up. But, you know, nothing is down tremendously for the quarter. And for the year, calendar year-to-date and one year, we're still positive, so we're still moving in the right direction. I think virtually every forecast that I've seen is projecting increase to volatility, and here we have it.
Shocked. Did you notice that?
So it's not, it's not true.
Shows up from time to time.
Yes, it does. Well, volatility, volatility up is good, but this month is volatility mostly down. But we have the same reports. The performance is summarized, and just the one page in the, I'm just looking at the summary for tonight's purposes, unless you want to get into more detail about anything. And we have the individual reports, and then, of course, the compliance with the investment policy, which is huge. We actually spoke with our financial advisor earlier today, and she stressed how important it was to have a policy, to be following it, and to be reporting on it. So we got all checkmarks in that area today, so...
Hey, just that summary.
The investment summary?
That you're looking at?
From the executive, it's, just flip one page.
Oh, it's the bread. I'm looking at the end.
The investment policy compliance is at the end.
It's sideways, so...
I, yeah.
Here, just look here.
No, that's okay, Paula. It's better that I listen to you than I look anyway, because you know what you're talking about.
So we are moving forward. I mean, everything is following our compliance as far as our investment policy. So we're just, I'm just carrying forward at this point. Don't anticipate any major changes. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Just, could you tell, just because we're, people are watching from home, what we're up over the year? I think that's important to know.
Well, the different funds, they range, the calendar... Well, the different funds, they, they range for calendar year-to-date. Let's see, is it anywhere forty-seven basis points? And the Pritt one is actually up two point three eight percent. But that would be, there's a lot, there's private equity and stuff in there that, that accounts for most of that gain. And for one year, it ranges from, let's see, sixty basis points up to three point eight four. So based on the different funds and different, different strategies for, for the different funds.
So the takeaway is that?
We're experiencing the volatility they said we would. But we're overall, we're up for the year. So we're up for the calendar year-to-date and the full year. So we'll look at it every quarter and then see if we need to make any adjustments.
We have, we now have an experience going back a full year, right?
Just about.
I'm sorry, with the exception of the permanent trust funds at Rockland.
Yeah, we're, we're getting there, just about, yeah. Next quarter, I think, we'll, we'll have it for everybody. We'll have one full year.
My only question is that when I'm looking across the top line under total fund, including accrued income, so that's, that is, you know, in essence, a capital gain and income figure.
Yeah, on the performance reports, that's the way I tend to get them.
No, no, that's, that's, that's fine.
Yep.
Is that a net number, net of fees?
They're all net of fees.
So the total fund, including accrued income, is net of fees? When I'm looking at, the calendar year-to-date is point four seven percent and the benchmark is one point zero two. Point four seven percent for the calendar year-to-date is net of fees?
I'm sorry, which one are you on?
The very top one. Rockland Trust, IMG.
Yes, everything, even Pritt, who did, I get a special report from them that's net of fees, but the, all the reports are net, the performances are net of fees. Yes.
These are, I mean, the reason I'm asking Paula is just to make an apples-to-apples comparison against the benchmark.
Yep, that's why I get the special report from you.
These are, frankly, they're, it's a very short time period, very difficult to draw a conclusion.
Right.
But having said that, they're, they seem to lie within the parameters one would expect.
Yes.
Chair recognizes Peter Meskettory.
Could you tell us what period for us who don't have the report? What period are you reporting on and what are the total assets under management?
The, the performance report actually gives a balance as of June thirtieth. There's a quarter. And then there's also calendar date, year-to-date. Or exception for those that aren't quite a year-to-date, and I have out to, one of the accounts is up to three years. But a lot of them are new, so we don't have a huge, we don't have the five, ten years that you'd like to see when you're, you're making that kind of analysis. And in, in trust funds, we have in the neighborhood of ten million dollars. And OPEB is just under a million.
Will that report go to the advisor?
Are we putting it on the website this time? So it'll be on the website so everyone can take a peek at it.
But it should go to advisory.
Yep.
Where will it be on the websites?
There'll be a link somewhere from the front, but it generally, we'll clearly put it on the finance page.
Under the finance or treasury page?
Thank you, Paula.
Good work, thank you.
My apologies, Kevin, Kevin asked it this week.
I was looking at somebody's, um, baseball portfolio. We have about four hundred and some thousand dollars in stocks. Really more for my fellow board members. I noticed one of the stocks, Investee's Altria, which is a tobacco company. It's about forty thousand dollars in our portfolio, about eight hundred shares. I, I, I think I'm really talking for, ask to my fellow selectmen, do we want to contemplate or at least discuss the possibility? It's the only, because it is a tobacco stock, it is a carcinogen, it has addictive qualities, it's banned and, it's not allowed in a number of public portfolios and so forth. So I just thought it might be interesting for us to discuss whether or not we should make a policy decision and ask that our advisors, you know, dis-divest us of our portfolio of the companies that derive the main part of their revenue from the sale of tobacco products for the reasons that, you know, I know, especially in a community like this, this is public money. You know, a number of us and our family people or whatever it is are often telling their children not to smoke and to keep away from tobacco. Find, you know, it's always the possibility, especially now that we're bringing it up publicly, that's one of the kids could hear this and say, well, you know, you're investing, you're buying public, you're buying tobacco and so forth. The other thing that concerns me relative to tobacco is, is that it's an addictive substance. They, you know, they, it's, you know, studies show that tobacco can be addictive. And addiction is something that I think is a troublesome thing in our society. It's a troublesome thing in Cohasset. So it might be an opportunity, it's not a lot of money for us to make a statement that, you know, other communities have and other companies and other entities that they don't want their public money or they don't want their money invested in, in tobacco and, and, and companies that derive from it. And then I'll just finally say that I'm not interested in this being extended to other things or whatever it is, but I think particularly the small part of our portfolio. So I'd like to ask for some deliberation on that, or are there any thoughts?
The deliberation, I think, on that should, should be an agenda item because that could get really lengthy. I understand your, what you're expressing. And I'd very simply ask that, you know, we're going to talk about that as a policy matter, that we put it on an agenda and engage not only ourselves, but our finance team and our financial advisor. And, you know, there's, there's a lot that goes into that. And while you may not want to draw the line, that doesn't mean that one of our colleagues might not say, well, he's a lot, I'm very much anti-drinking, I think we have to toss out Inbev, or I don't like the way that Walmart treats its people. So there goes that. And the next thing you know, we're not left with much of an investment strategy. So the way to go about that is to find a way to express it. And frankly, those things do exist today and they aren't necessarily at odds with investment performance. But I think that's an engagement we should have with a, with an audience that can help guide us to get you to the point.
Can we put that on the next week's agenda, that next agenda right on there?
Uh, you know what, Kevin? Let's talk about that tomorrow when we sit down with the town manager to talk about the agenda and figure out where the space is for it. Because it, it is a lengthy conversation, okay? And that's why, I'm not trying to sidetrack it, but make sure that that's a conversation that we have, we have the time and the luxury to have.
Is Ed Bell supposed to say anything?
Sorry, there's one question. Is there a disvestiture strategy or policy for the, for the new town?
I think that that's a question we'd have to ask the finance committee, because I have a finance group, because I, I don't know that we've run across this in the past.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask, is there one?
Is there a disvestiture policy for the town? Or is there something that we would not necessarily invest in due to corporate strategies that are not in the best means for the town or?
It's not a part of the investment policy at this point.
The investment policy statement doesn't have a social contract.
That's one that we should probably consider.
Well, it's, it's, again, it's worthwhile to have the conversation. I think it's, it's very much important to do something like this. I say this with a great deal of humility. You really want to bring in your financial advisor and your finance team before you simply make it because the consequences can be larger than you anticipate.
Well, we could also bring in a sociologist and a physician too, if we're going to bring in a financial advisor.
Got our cardiologist.
This, we have a cardiologist.
No, that's, that's fine.
I mean, this is, this is.
That's where the input comes in. But the point is that, you know, before you, before you pull the ripcord, make sure the parachute's packed.
I, I agree that it is a larger discussion. And it may have impact more far-ranging than just a tobacco company. So I, I agree that it should be separate. But I think that the point that Kevin is getting to is that, well, I, I think they're coming, you're coming from two very different places. One is strictly from a monetary investment point of view. I'm not saying one is better than the other or anything. I'm saying the other is a social contract. So I think what the board, in my opinion, might want to discuss first is, do we want to go down the road of a social contract in our investments?
I just, if I could just say.
Framing the, framing the conversation is, is appropriate, I understand.
I think part of this is part of what our values are as a community. And we are community leaders. And so I'm not uncomfortable at all with trying to express ourselves and direct ourselves in a way that conforms with the values of the community. I mean, if, if dot us who, you know? So I, I think the discussion's worthwhile having and I think that the chairman is right. Let's, let's have a diversity of opinion on it. I wouldn't want that just to be a financial, because numbers, this isn't about numbers. This is, this is also about addiction. This is about, this is about carcinogens, you know, and so forth and so on. There's lots of things that this can be about. So let's, let's have the discussion, but have it in a proper, robust manner.
The board of health, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, would it be helpful if we researched some of the communities that have these?
Yeah.
So they could share the deal rather than we have at the wheel?
Yeah, maybe a good first step.
If I could, several, these companies that we deal with have offered to come in and, and speak. So I would like to have one of them available because they must have run into this and, and, and bring up. So if we could just let us, let me know and I can get at least one of them to show up.
Well, it would be particularly Philip Morris Altria, would be nice to have him.
I'm talking about the Markman's Trust of the Bath Oliver, folks that do the investment. I can tell you right now, Pritt is a sixty-five billion dollar organization. We, if, I mean, anything they've got going on in there that we don't really have a whole lot of say on, but the others we do. So we're either in or out, I guess, is what I'm saying with Pritt.
It's, it's, it's certainly worthwhile to bring some of the, the investment advisors.
One of them to show up.
We'll spend a little bit more time talking about this.
Yeah, I think if we follow through, one, the good first step would be to have Chris look at two of several other towns and report back to either us or a subcommittee or whatever.
Well, I think a good first step, as Karen suggests, is having the basic discussion as to whether or not this is the direction we want to go. Chris is looking, would look into how other towns have executed, so.
Well, in determining that, I think it would be helpful to.
Oh, no, it is, it is. The, the short answer to your, to your direction is, yeah, this can be executed. Question is, what is the, what is the investment policy still set? And if there are investment consequences that go with it, are we well informed to make the choices that would go with that? As long as the, the answers to those are answers that the board is comfortable with, then I think you, you have the information you need to go ahead and vote on policy. Are we done with this for now? Because we've agreed that we will move this to an agenda item.
So we will have it on a future agenda item, is that?
Is that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. All right. Next up is licenses, permits. We need to formally set the election date first, which is our, jumping ahead. I'm sorry, I was looking at the clock. Yes, the next, the next item is to set the election date for town elections, which has to fall within.
Thirty days.
Thirty days following annual town meeting. Annual town meeting is set for May second. Proposed election date is May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. You may remember that a couple of weeks ago, we identified dates for special town meeting and annual town meeting, but at that time, we didn't set the date for the town, the town election, annual town election. So proposed date is May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, which if I remember right, is a Saturday.
Sixteen, two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen. Right, that's, right. Two thousand sixteen, thank you very much.
If I may, what, just the edification of everybody, what are the options?
That is, that is the date the clerk has asked us to set, so normally we just follow the.
But I mean, is, is, what's the, so does it with the law on that, thirty days after town meeting?
I believe it has to be within thirty days if I recall correctly.
We generally go to a week.
Well, generally, depending on, if special town meeting, if town meeting is usually on a Saturday, that's usually the following Saturday. The clerk is concerned that if the meeting goes an extra day, she'll still have trouble scrambling to get the election together for that second, that Saturday. So she's asking for more time between town meeting, the actual date of the elections. That's why she's recommending the fourteenth. You can set a different date if you want, but.
May fourteenth, where does that apply? I know we had the discussion, but I, forgive me, I can't remember. School vacations or nothing?
No, we won't pass that.
We won't pass. Are we in, when is Mother's Day is the eighth, seventh day?
Mother's Day is the eighth.
Yep.
Does anyone happen to know when the first command is?
It's Mother's Day weekend. It'll be the song. Usually it's Mother's Day weekend. So, so actually, this turns out to be better that way also. Yep.
All right. Is there discussion on this?
I, I make a motion that we set the annual town election for Saturday, May fourteenth, two thousand sixteen.
A second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none.
The only thing that's on the agenda is the fifteenth, so that's sixteen.
Right, we're, we're, the motion, the motion is for two thousand sixteen. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we can move on to licenses and events. First item is Saint Stephen's Parish Annual Picnic. You all have the application in the packet. Is there anyone here from Saint Stephen's?
I don't think anybody else is planning to come tonight. I think this is a fairly routine item, so.
Just, were the, were the dates for town meeting and were those just advisory for now? We weren't going to discuss those?
Yeah, we have, we're.
That's just, that was just a skip.
We're not, obviously not calling town meeting.
Right.
All right. Are there any questions with respect to the application?
On Saint Stephen's, for the eighty-fourth time in the last eighty-seven applications, we are not named as an insured on the policy. So someday we're going to miss this and we're going to be sorry. So could we make sure that our vote, when we vote on this, it is contingent that we are named as an additional insured? Probably should get a recorder that says the same thing.
So the confusion is that we keep getting listed as a certificate holder, but not as.
Additional insured.
Additional insured.
A holder just means you hold a paper. But I don't think we're even listed as a holder, are we?
Yes.
Yeah, a holder means nothing, it just means you're holding a piece of paper.
Some of them, and I don't have this in front of me, say that the holder is also additional insured. Depends, I don't know that this is said.
Yeah, I didn't see that then.
And we'll make sure that that.
I think it was not those words. Confers no rights upon the certificate holder.
Yeah, they.
Rights, rights, what does that mean?
We will clarify what that.
We keep going through this every time. All you need is in the box. We finally compromised. Just name us as an additional insured. I don't know why, when this comes in, you can't stop it there so we don't have to discuss it every time. Just a point of administrative relief.
And I will speak with staff about it.
Oh, okay, good. Because if it comes up again.
It does state it.
We'll send it to you.
It'll be the ninetieth time.
If the certificate holder is an additional insured, the policy must be endorsed.
Gets worse. I told you that.
All right. So may I have a motion that is contingent upon the proper application of the insurance certificate?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Saint Stephen's Parish Church Picnic event permit would be proviso that the town is an additional.
Named insured.
Named insured on this kind of policy.
And this is for September twentieth?
For September twentieth, three P M. Eight A M to three P M.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Second item is the request for a continuous? I'm looking for, I'm looking for a.
Extension.
No, yeah, so for St. John Enterprises.
Extension of the transfer of the license.
Thank you. That's exactly what I'm looking for.
You want another three months?
Right. The attorney for St. John Enterprises has contacted us, asking for a further extension on your pending transfer of alcohol license from South Main Street location down here in the village to Chief Justice Cushing, Highway three A. They're, they are considering other locations and would simply like time to square that away. So, so any further discussion?
I do have a couple of questions. Is anybody here from St. John?
No.
One of the questions I have is, I, I want, if, if anybody remembers when we gave them their first extension, when they moved out, because it's been over a year. And I know that there's other businesses in town that would like, this is a full liquor license. In other words, they can sell, um, things other than beer and wine. Um, and there's other businesses that have at least called me and said, you know, somebody's walking around with this license in the pocket. So, I just want to understand sort of the precedent about that and continuing that going forward and, um, and also how long this has been. Because, you know, just to hold something that, that, that has a very significant economic value to it, um, until you shop around and find the right thing, to me is, uh, I'm not very comfortable with that.
As I understand it, I'm sorry, Jim.
Well, I think it's a good point. One thing I'd like to clarify is in the holding, to follow up on Diane saying, are we depriving anybody else who may want to come forward and have a license?
I know that Jan's been working with the, uh, A B C C folks in Boston, and, um, I, she's, she's not, she's not on vacation, so I haven't updated the answer yet. But, um, I, I, she is trying to get some additional clarification as to how long. They, they had a right, we were instructed that they had a right to ask for some period of time. The question is, how long is that period of time? How, when can the board say, okay, you've really had enough time? And I, we don't have, at last I spoke with Jim, we did not have an answer. We will have an answer for you, uh, on that, as much as A B C C will give us more, um, but we'll definitely follow up before that.
Could you also find out if we're, if we're blocking anybody else who would be, might be interested?
Well, it's not so much that if we're blocking, it's whether or not we have an obligation to allow them time. I mean, and that's one of the, I mean, if we, if you don't renew it, they can always appeal and say, you, you've been unfair and unreasonable. So, I think that's put a lot of money in the danger. Because again, Jen has been in touch with the folks in Boston on this pretty consistently, aware of their headquarters. But I, we will, we, we, I, I agree that it's worth, uh, getting a clarification. I know that she's trying to get an answer as to how much time is enough to be reasonable.
So, we approve licenses on or about the end of June of the free year, and remind me?
December. December.
December. Oh, December. So, what are the, oh, the other licenses? No? No?
I was confused.
Okay. So, at the end of this year, within about four months? Because the license is still valid if we approved it. I don't know that we have the right to revoke it, um, or take it away from them without.
That's a fair question, it's a fair, another fair point as well. It's going to come a renewal in four months anyway. Do we have an obligation to allow them to return the search, if they don't have an active location? Because that is also another value, that's right? The town wants, issues licenses so they can be used. They're not there to be banked and stuck on a shelf, as you're pointing, Kevin, so, um. We, we will, I, I'll get, I'll try to get clarification.
I'm not arguing one way or the other, but we, we do have an obligation also to the license holder.
No, it's clarification. The question is, how long is that, when does that expire?
When does that expire?
Diane?
Could, could I suggest, so this letter was, um, written on July twenty-third, um, asking for a three-month extension. I assume there, the license expires.
December.
Oh, it's in.
December.
In December.
Yeah. I, um.
So, I, I would, I would just, I would like to resolve this sooner rather than later. So, instead of giving them a three-month extension, maybe, and that extension isn't on the license, it's on the.
Application for transfer.
Application for the transfer. So, I, you know, I would be comfortable extending it if you think in the agenda is going forward, we could resolve this by the end of September. Because they say in their letter, they're going to know about these possible locations in August. I'd hate to do it and then not get to it till November.
Kevin?
Wondering if it might be helpful in light of this conversation to not move on this tonight, move it to another, sometime that we could do. Have these people here, so they can answer these questions and also give Chris time to get, get some more information from us.
What, 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 there are several questions going on at the same time that need clarification. I, I think the first of them is that, does the, um, as the liquor licensing authority in town, can we remove a granted license for non-performance? I think that's just a basic answer we should have. Not that we'd look to, but I, I don't, I, I don't know that we can, short of a violation. Simply that you're not using it might not be a violation. In any case, as, as is clear, the license itself expires in December, on the thirty-first. So, a, a non-performing license, I don't think would be, should be reissued. That seems kind of silly. Having said that, this, this letter was, uh, sent to us in July. The request is for three months. I mean, I can understand if he's, if, if the applicant is waiting to hear on properties and he's expecting to hear on those properties in August, he probably needed another thirty days to anticipate, need to build out, present those plans, et cetera. I would, I would simply suggest to the board that in order to respond to the, to the applicant in this place, in this case, we might consider granting three months from the date of the letter. Because in effect, there's already a month built in. So, it's something you may want to give some consideration to. And Kevin, uh, to your point, ask for an audience with the applicant in the next forty-five days to hear what those plans, or contingent plans are. If they, if there are no contingent plans, then we can expect the license would return to the town at the end of December.
Yeah, I, I, I believe, um, in April or May, we extended them through July for the transfer of application. So, the three months would probably be from August first. It would be all of August, which, as you said, we're already through September and October.
So, essentially, we're, we're simply, uh, looking at, uh, time in service already for that extension. I, you know, at the moment, the license is non-performing. And we don't have knowledge as to whether or not we can revoke a non-performing license.
If I could, um, request that, when, when issues like this, when items, uh, agenda items like this come up, it would be most helpful if we could have the anticipated questions answered prior to the meeting, so that we can make a decision and not have to put it off, um, for another time. And maybe, maybe I'll take the responsibility on it that I did not come back upon receipt of the packet and, and ask the questions. But, um, it just, I think would be, be helpful for us.
Well, so let's, give me a date and we'll work from there, uh, for, for them to appear on the next, next, over. You mean a date for, for their appearance?
Yeah.
Do you want to work on that?
The second meeting of September, the first of October. I would, I would look toward the second meeting of September. I think we want to get some resolution on this, so it's not dangling out there. So, it's the twenty, September twenty-second. So, let's target that date. Okay? Now, but in the meantime.
Right.
They've asked for an extension, uh, I, oh, an extension on the transfer of the license. So, the, uh, the transfer, the original extension we gave them, Diane's memory being, being probably the clearest.
Not necessarily.
I've heard, I've heard quoted, would bring us through August. We need to respond.
October.
No, no, the last.
Oh, right.
The last extension. So, we need to respond in some way, which is either an extension or denial of an extension.
So, I, I'm willing to make a motion. I believe the, the extension, the last extension was through July. So, I'll make a motion that we, um, extend a further extension of the application for transfer for three additional months, which would take them through the end of October.
Commencing August first.
Commencing Au- August first through the month of October, um, knowing that we're going to meet with them in September to resolve this.
Okay, so just for clarification, you move that we, we, um, renew the extension retroactively from August first for ninety days, which would bring them through October thirty-first. Make sense? Do you have a second?
Second.
A second.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify if I say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, moving on. Seven forty-five or so, um, dredging update with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Harbor Master. This is a long-awaited presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Craig Martin. I'm with the New England District Army Corps of Engineers. So, I'm the project manager for the Cohasset dredging project. So, I think we have a presentation. And I, I will say first of all, I think the, the overall intent of my presentation is sort of give it, is enough background to sort of educate you about the hydraulic dredging process, because the last time that we stretched was mechanical, so it's a little bit different than last time. And then to answer any questions you guys may have. So, um, I'll start off by giving you, uh, sort of a layout of our team. So, um, our team is comprised of both Army Corps and its contractor, which in this case is H two H Associates, uh, as the prime contractor, with a subcontractor to the, um, group Blue Waters Marine, which is the actual dredging company. Uh, we also have, um, another subcontractor in R W Rosano Corp. That's going to be the folks doing the actual beach, um, grading. It sounds like at the, um, pre-construction meeting, this is someone familiar to your, your own work, that we were very lucky to have him. So, he has sort of the, the local knowledge that we're interested in. And I will say something that's not on this, um, slide is that the H two H also got a technical consultant, which is one of our recently retired, um, core resident office members. So, they have a very good team backing them to get the job done. So, we feel extremely comfortable with them, uh, doing the work. And just briefly, to give you a sort of a synopsis of how we got here, um, the last time the channel was dredged was back in ninety-eight, in two thousand. You're probably familiar with that. And we removed about a hundred and two thousand cubic yards. Uh, this was done mechanically, it looked like a big bucket and an excavator. Uh, this time around is going to be, uh, hydraulically dredged. Reason we're doing that is we can use, uh, the overall goal of the Army Corps of Engineers is to use our material beneficial at any, at any time we can. And we saw an opportunity to use the clean sand from the channel and Bailey's Point, uh, on Sandy Beach. Versus the other alternative, where you take the material offshore and place it in essentially a, a deep hole in the middle of Cape Cod Bay, which, which does nobody any good. So, um, we got the, the funding for this project is through, um, Hurricane Sandy. So, there, we really wanted to look at the places that Sandy could have affected, um, which, by talking to Lori, was the focus of the entrance channel and the, the Bailey Spit area, all of which is great fine sand. So, that's going to be the stuff that we're going to be removing. Uh, this sort of gives you an idea of the areas geographically. North is to the right, I don't know if you know what else, left. These are the worst areas that they have shoaled in. This is a, a hydrographic survey of last year. So, they've gotten actually even worse with this last year's storm events. So, we are going to be taking a, a, a few more thousand cubic yards out than we originally anticipated, but that's all covered in, in contract. So, um, but this will be our, most of the material is in the channel. Something on the order of about seventy percent of the material is here in, in this area. Uh, this is going to be dredging to bring it back down to the authorized depth of, uh, eight feet below, you know, the water, uh, which is, uh, how it was originally designed. And the other areas we're going to focus on is immediately inside the breakwaters. They're just, just inside the breakwater, sort of to southeast of the breakwater, um, and then right at the area of Bailey's, Bailey's Spit. There are some areas that are not going to be dredged. Uh, these are typically a lot lower in, in height. They're also not going to be dredged because they're not matching, um, material that will go on the beach. They're either silty, in the case of the seven-foot anchorage, sort of up and to the right, or they're too rocky, uh, down in the, um, off to the west in one of the six-foot anchorages. So, those areas are going to be left in place. And again, this was focused on areas that could have been impacted by Hurricane Sandy. And so the blue stuff is stuff that was sort of already there. So, the, the orange is what's going to be removed. So, taking that, um, some of the, the overall construction and some of the things you're going to see on site here, um, ramping up probably in the next, I guess, three weeks or so, you're going to start to see, uh, equipment coming to Cohasset. The rights of entry that we got with the town started on the fifteenth of September. That allows our contractor to sort of bring its, uh, dredging equipment, its pipe, all that to the area. But dredging actually can't begin until October first, and that's because of, um, certain environmental windows, and specifically species that are, um, we want to stay away from harming. So, the, the window, the available window is October first through January thirty-first. But with the pre-construction meeting that we had with the contractor, it's anticipated that they are going to complete their work prior to Thanksgiving. So, they're going to get in and get out. They're not going to stretch it the entire length of the.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have, they have other work that they want to get done, and, um, you know, it benefits everybody to get in and get out. They will, one of the rights of entry that we got from the town is the Sandy Beach parking lot. It's about half the beach parking lot. That's where you're going to see most of the effort involved. They're going to be fusing, it's like, uh, what you would think of as a PVC pipe, flexible pipe stuff. They'll be fusing those in, in the parking lot or on the beach in five-hundred-foot lengths, and then taking them out and connecting them, um, so that they're ready to dredge come October first.
Yeah, when it comes up Sandy Beach, where does the sand going to go? Because we just had this discussion earlier.
That's the next, that's the very next slide. So, what they'll do is they'll probably, they'll probably start on the north end. What they like to do is they build the pipe length to its longest length, and then you sort of chop off sections as they need to come down the beach. So, it'll, most of the fill will start on the north side, and you'll build, they have a trench so that they can get the material out of, um, solution. Most of what they pump through a hydraulic dredge is, is about eighty to eighty-five percent water and fifteen to twenty percent sand. So, you're going to see a lot of water, um, and, you know, don't, don't be disillusioned that it's darker than normal, because it, it will bleach. It will look very much similar to sand color. That's one of the questions that we had from the Sandy Beach Association. Is it going to look the same? It will. Initially, it's going to look like mud coming out of the end of the pipe. Sometimes people freak out, but even the cleanest sand on, you know, Florida beaches look like that. So, um, about, they, they build a trench and they allow the water to run off and keep the sand in place. So, again, we're going to have Rosano, uh, managing the material at that end to shape and grade, uh, material, which will sort of look like this. On the right hand side, and also left hand side, uh, we have a topographic survey that we completed, uh, last winter, actually, the winter before last, and that's sort of their winter look. You guys know very well, the beach changes between winter and summer. It's much more full, you know, full and more sandy on the beach during the summer. So, um, it'll, it'll mimic the, the beach that is there. It's going to be raised a little bit, which will give you a little bit more sand. Instead of having a sort of a rocky shore, you'll have more of a, I'm going to say rocky shore, that's my problem. But you'll have very much the same sort of beach sand. It's the same material that's moved up and down the coast that's actually coming into Cohasset. So, this will fit the, we have all the material fitting from the, um, from the dredge areas on, on the Sandy Beach. And then, um, we've already completed our pre-construction meeting, which Lori and Chris attended, sort of get a feel of the contractor, sort of schedule that we expected. Like I mentioned, the next thing to sort of come, come online is the mobilization of the equipment, and that should start on September fifteenth. Operations from the, the actual dredging will be complete is around Oc- October first. Do you ever take a day? They can't start before October first, but we have heavy indication that they're going to, as soon as, um, the date clicks over, they're going to start dredging. And we've gotten an initial schedule that the dredge operations will be done by the twentieth of November. And then they'll have a couple of weeks where they'll sort of pull apart, pull the pipe apart, pull the dredge equipment, um, away. And that'll be a couple of weeks probably, uh, to get that out. So, by early December, you know, Co- Cohasset's, um, harbor will be back to its authorized depths in the channel and around Bailey's Spit, and, you know, the equipment will be gone. So, that's sort of just a very general swath of, of what is, what we're expecting to go, to happen. happen. Like I said, we're very comfortable with the contractor, especially having some of the technical representation that they've included. They sort of went above and beyond to include some of, one of our folks is extremely experienced with dredging, especially hydraulic dredging, so.
So what it, and that takeaway is, this is a quicker project than we were originally anticipating?
Yeah, I think we had sort of expected about a three-month process, but these folks, they did something similar in New Jersey, and they completed it faster than they anticipated even, so there's all indication that they're going to stick to their schedule.
Okay. And just a simple point of clarification, in the Outer Harbor Channel, your dredging essentially stays within the same structural lines as the traditional channel, you're not looking at expanding the width or?
Oh, no. No expansion of width, you know, there's probably, you know, Lori and Chris probably manipulated buoys, so it's going to be, look different, you know, to get around things, but you know, it's going to go back down, it's going to have the, we're now actually allowed to widen or deepen the channel unless Congress tells us that we can, so it'll go back down to what it was expected.
So Lori, I'm forgetting, eight feet mean low, eight feet mean low water and thirty feet wide?
Ninety feet.
Ninety feet wide, no, it hasn't been ninety feet wide forever.
That's right. Right now, it's about fifty feet wide. So there'll be a lot of sand coming out.
Questions, folks? How does this, a lot of sand going on Sandy Beach there, fit in with, you know, our previous discussion of, we're worried about a lot of sand blowing across the road and into Little Harbor and so forth, is it, is that, you know, coordinated kind of what's going on, you know, just curious, is, are we?
That is most certainly been something that Public Works has been thinking about, the Conservation Commission has looked at, and I think that some of the proactive steps that Robert Lawrence brought forward and that Brian has worked with more are efforts to kind of address that, as much as, as much as can be, I mean, to enhance the proactive approach to keep the sand on the beach. And this, this is meant, this was something that was developed, you know, many, multiple years ago, in an effort to be proverbial, punish the beach, and to dredge the harm out of it, so.
Right. We've also, there's a gentleman that, can't think of his name, blanking on his name right now, he works for Northeastern, so he's taken many, many transects, many material, we actually got his technical background on can this, you know, is this going to have a bad effect on Sandy Beach, and he was, absolutely not, you know, the beach can take it, you know, the sand moves off the beach and on the beach, it's a very dynamic area, and you know, we got sort of a good clarification on, you know, we're not just putting it there and not worrying about what happens to it. It's going to be, you know, we've built in berms that mimics the, sort of the original beach, so you know, we've had that in our minds as we've been designing the project.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you and congratulations on this, this has been a long time coming, Lori, this has been your main focus for a long time. We, we talked last year about, you know, whether, how the topography was going to change at Sandy Beach, and how it might impact not only the blowing sand, but whether we needed to have higher rocks or different kind of rock, or how we're going to deal with the parking lot, so I think those are all conversations that we, that are still yet for us to have, and the fact that they're finishing earlier is, is very good news, assuming that we get through December, because that should give us enough time to queue up conversations for the spring in terms of, is, you know, once it's on there, then we're going to know, we're going to know how high is it, or how, you know, how is it going to impact everything? And so when we have the conversation about the blowing sand and the changing topography and that whole area, region, I think we'll, the fact that this is going to finish by December first will, will give us enough time to plan accordingly going forward.
And I would say that depending upon the weather that you guys get this winter, depend on how much this moves back out into the water, it's, like I said, it's extremely dynamic. You, it may look like the beach that you got before October first, if you have a really bad winter, that we obviously can't control. So, you know, I would say, you know, check it out at the end of the, of the construction, but also next, next spring or summer, early spring, when it starts to build back up naturally.
Paul was, Paul was asked to go next, and yes, you're following me.
What question were you? Below mean watermark, below that, will there be any piping of the slurry there, or is all going to be?
No, it's all.
So it's all on the beach, and then just whatever falls forward?
Right.
Into the surf will be what is, what is designated in that orange line there?
Right.
So everything is above the low watermark?
Absolutely. We're not going to be putting bulldozers into the water trying to grade stuff underwater. That's just, as a part of our water quality permit, we had to make a, you know, some kind of estimate on how far the material is going to move off. You have cobble off, off, off the beach, and for us to change habitat, we can't do that, so we had to come up with an estimation of, you know, when the, when the sand moves off and when it moves back, where exactly is it going to go? All the material is going to be placed above mean high tide, so you have the pipe will be up, you know, high on the beach, and then it'll just, the water and the sand run, and then it'll be graded.
So it will depend on just a couple decent winter storms and that, you know, what we're on.
We have a lot of, you know, they're doing, unfortunately, a lot of our dredging is during winter time, and sometimes in some certain situations, it's going as fast as we can pump it, you know, it's leaving the beach under a storm situation as fast as we can get it on there, so.
We'll redeposit right in the channel.
That's what I was going to say, when it goes away, it's going out in the ocean, right?
No, 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 that's one of the advantages of Sandy Beach, you know, we had looked at other areas, just in sort of in between Situa and Cohasset, where it could have been other habitat for birds and?
Situa can use plenty of sand.
Right, right, we couldn't pump it that far, but you know, we had looked just beyond the harbors end, there's, there's no, you know, over deck, the cattle, you know, there might be migration, but you're not looking, this is a pocket beach, most of the sand just comes on and goes off the beach immediate in the vicinity, we're not anticipating that it comes back down the Cohasset Channel.
Karen?
First of all, thank you.
Sure.
I just want to make a comment to Kevin and Diane, and that the blowing sand is not, although we always like to think that we're unique here in Cohasset, the blowing sand is not something unique to Cohasset, we're not the first town or municipality to try to deal with it, there are plenty of strategies that have been employed, you know, successfully and unsuccessfully, I guess, and we can learn from them, I assume that that's something that Brian is looking into, but nature is nature, and unless we want to build a forty-foot wall or something, I think the sand is going to blow, and we need to have some acceptance of that.
I mean, I don't want to get, I don't want to get involved with the blowing sand.
No, 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 that was just something. Stay away from my last spring. No, no.
In in October and out by Thanksgiving, that's great, thank you. Again, I echo my colleagues' comments, thank you very much for taking the time to make the presentation. The town, both the, the working boats for, you know, whom the harbor means everything, including their livelihood, and those of us who just find it a great place to play, thank you very much for helping us continue to gain access to the ocean uninterrupted or minimally interrupted, so, thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. And Lori, thank you for your work in coordinating so much of this.
Yeah, she's, she's been absolutely great to work with.
Do you have the presentation?
She's one of the better hard-tempered coworkers.
Can you go up on the one right?
We know that.
Thank you very much. All right, folks, moving along, we are, up for our next item on the agenda, the appointment of our police chief. So what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to speak, I am going to have the candidate speak, and then, as in your past practice, I will ask, you know, one of my last questions, this is just a board deliberation, right? And that, I'm going to go from there, so you've been providing with a fair amount of materials, I've been available to all of you to answer questions, and so we're now at the end of the process.
I think we ought to go to all of Rob's remarks right now.
Once again, as you just heard from the town manager, we established a practice, evaluating appointments, this is a board deliberation. Please have a quiet. This is a board deliberation. We, the board is expected to ask questions of the appointee, and then derive on their own the nature of their vote. We will not be taking public comment, that is the practice, this is, this is a board responsibility and board duty, and believe me, we've had plenty of public comment over the years, so I do believe we're well-prepared to continue. Thank you, Mr. Chief. Tonight, I formally make an appointment for Cohasset Police Chief, which I intend not only to close a long, challenging chapter for the town, but much more importantly, to begin an active process to manage Cohasset's police department into the future by building up past successes, identifying fresh goals and objectives, by assessing and improving on training opportunities for every officer, whatever their rank, so they're equipped to be the best they can be every day, to update procedures and policies, to improve day-to-day operations, improve workflow and record-keeping, while opening up more time for community policing and education. I make this appointment based upon merit and fitness, giving fair weight to local experience, with a full appreciation that management's success in Cohasset requires every appointed official to work actively to build up their own personal and professional skill sets, and to work consistently to improve the skill sets of each and every member of their staff. Being the chief of police in any town is an honor and a privilege, one which requires hard work, a commitment to fair and neutral enforcement of the law, and a deep and genuine interest in the welfare of the community in which they serve. I've worked closely with Acting Chief Bill Quigley since I took office as town manager, and throughout this time, Bill's commitment to the department and to the community itself have been crystal clear. His passion for policing, for not, for the not always sexy, but critical aspects of the job, like budgeting and capital planning, and his rise through the ranks from animal control officer to acting chief, all speak to his drive and determination. Tonight, I officially recommend the removal of the word "acting" from Bill's title, and name him the Cohasset Chief of Police. As I stated at the outset, this appointment is a beginning, a fresh start, an opportunity for new growth and achievement. Bill and I have spoken at length about the present and future of the department, and we'll be meeting regularly to collaboratively address the opportunities and challenges that confront the department and the town. I look forward to the department building upon successes, never being self-satisfied where things are today, but constantly striving to improve, to build upon, to learn, to teach, and to share with Cohasset the very best community-oriented law enforcement possible, to maintain a tradition, but to build on a tradition. Bill Quigley is my appointment for Cohasset Chief of Police, and I expect that he will give his all to this position, to the people of Cohasset, and I have faith he's going to do that job. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you.
I think it's fairly appropriate at this point to, instead of launching all the questions, hear from you. In that respect, what's, you've had a little bit of time to get used to the position. When you take a look at, at your department, if you can break it down between the administrative side of it and the job, the job that the department needs to do within the community, what would you say are your challenges on the administrative side and on the, on executing the role, and what are the opportunities on the administrative side?
First of all, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Chris. I'm truly humbled to be here. I just want to take a step back and talk about some history. I've been a town employee here for almost twenty-nine years. In nineteen eighty-seven, twenty-eight years ago, I was appointed as the animal control officer, not in this room, but at the auditorium I would use to have, the selectmen's meetings. It was a lot bigger room and a lot cooler room. In nineteen ninety-three, twenty-two years ago, I was appointed by the board as a special police officer in the town of Cohasset. In nineteen ninety-four, twenty-one years ago, the department, the police and fire department combined dispatch, and I was appointed as a police and fire dispatcher. In nineteen ninety-five, twenty years ago, I was appointed as a full-time police officer. In two thousand and two, thirteen years ago, I was appointed as a sergeant by the board. Two thousand and seven, eight years ago, I was appointed as a lieutenant and patrol commander for the department. In two thousand and eleven, four years ago, I was appointed, in this room here, as deputy chief. In two thousand and twelve, three years ago, I was asked to be the acting chief. I've spent my, my whole adult life working in Cohasset, I've come to love this community, the department is really close to my heart. You, that said, in building upon what Chris talked about, we're here to talk about the present and look at the future of the department, and that, that's, you know, that's where we need to go at this point. Your police department is exceptional, and it's not, you know, when I say your police department, it's not me, it's, it's a lot of the officers behind me here. With, you know, the, for many reasons, the crime rate is low in Cohasset, some of those reasons, one of the reasons is you have officers that care, you have, you have a town that invests in its police departments, and you have citizens that care. That's not the case in every town. We have plenty, plenty of successes to talk about, but there's a lot of work to do. You know, and one of the things I've learned in the last three years, that ambition sometimes clashes with fiscal reality, and that's, that's the management side of things. It's funny, in this position now, I've had the unique opportunity to do this for three years, and you know, the patrolmen say, it must be great to be chief, it must be great to be a sergeant, it must be great to be a lieutenant, and I found myself saying, jeez, it was really fun being a patrolman. So, you know, it's, you know, what you become used to. You know, some days, you know, the running joke is, you know, around January, February, I'm an armed accountant, and you know, papers everywhere, and the advent tapes, you know, scrawled down the desk, and you know, it's long days and long nights, and you know, committee meetings and things like that, but I couldn't be happier doing those types of things, because it helps the department. And again, the department is, is, is near and dear to my heart. As we go forward, you know, if I'm given the opportunity to, to continue as the chief of police, in, there's basically three things where I want to go. There's planning and preparedness to keep crime low, and we want to, you know, really embrace innovation and embracing employees. These are things that we haven't done in the past, there's been, it hadn't been a lot of planning years ago, you know, if there's a retirement coming up, these things have to be, you know, they can be projected, and we've got ourselves in, you know, in a position in past years where, you know, there wasn't a lot of planning, and it, it impacted operations. I don't, we've, we've been lucky and, and, you know, we've seen these things come in recently, and Chris has, has helped immensely in helping to reduce the impacts on the budget when it comes to new hires and things like that, he's given me the leeway to hire people. I've hired, in three years, I think it's seven people, at least six, possibly seven. But we, we see these openings coming, we're, we're not in a situation where it's cost us thousands and thousands of dollars in overtime. in overtime to replace people. We're training them and they're taking people's places as they fall off the roster, retirees. As far as innovation goes, we really, the, you know, we're embracing it for the first time. We're tracking overtime through use of technology. We're tracking days off. We're tracking vacation days, personal time. And that hasn't always been the case. We've done it with paper and pencil. So there's, you know, I've been working really closely with Chris and the new chief technology officer just recently to really see what's out there and streamline operations. And, you know, and the last thing is personnel. We really need to invest in our personnel and keep the people we have. We have a great crew. We really do. And a lot of you folks know these officers. And we want to, you know, keep them on board and help them with their professional development and plan for the future. You know, it's, in ten or so years, you'll have more people retiring. Right now, there's going to be, there's a well right now. We have a very young department. But in the next decade, there will be a lot of openings and a lot of turnover. So we want to plan for that.
What, you'd said earlier, and I picked up on it, and we have a low crime rate in town, but low never means nonexistent. It does mean, however, it translates for most of us as a very comfortable place to live. Nonetheless, it doesn't mean that there aren't things percolating that we ought to be keeping our eyes on. So as a department, what are those things?
One of the major things is the opioid crisis. It's a regional, it's a regional issue. It's a major health issue. And we've, you guys will be the first to learn, but we're teaming up with the Shrek towns. Detective Lieutenant Lennon is forming a task force. The paperwork is being distributed to the chiefs right now. I've talked to the chiefs offline over the months, and they're willing to group with us. And we've been doing it informally. We want to formalize it. It'll be led by the Cohasset Police Department. There'll be a task force that deals basically with drugs and other crimes related to drugs, venions, things like that. But over the past probably six weeks, our detectives, in conjunction with the detectives from these other Shrek towns, have made seven arrests and seized over three ounces of heroin. So...
Go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt. What is, not being heroin, is it? What does that translate to? Or how is that, what, how much is that?
Well, there's 28 grams in an ounce, I think.
Twenty point five grams in an ounce.
I'm sorry?
Twenty point five.
Twenty point five?
Trained in the metrics.
It's a lot.
It's a lot of heroin. And again, you know, we're working with Howell, we're working with Kingdom, Noelwell. And of course, us, and Greg is meeting every day with these detectives. And they're working on this, and they're doing an outstanding job. And it's not something we talk about a lot because there are active investigations. But it is out there. It's here. You know, hopefully, the line is we're not going to arrest our way out of it. We're not, but we can make a dent and make it, you know, so it's not happening here. We can chase these folks out of here.
Good. I noticed in your SWAT analysis, one of the things you also identified, and I don't know if it's causal or just correlated, along with population growth, there seems to be an increasing number of calls for mental health issues and domestic violence. Is the, is our department currently trained to deal with this? And if so, are we, you know, are there areas that we really ought to seek to improve the training?
We've brought in, within the last three years, we've brought in the folks from Dov, Domestic Violence Advocacy Group. And they've done some specialized training with the department. I want to bring them back. We've also just partnered with the mental health group out of Blue Hills that's going to come in, and they've offered to do some training. It's part of a grant. They asked us, as one of the, we're one of the first departments in the area to sign on with them, to say we'd support them in their grant. And they're coming down to do some training with us. As a matter of fact, we're going to have a meeting in the month of September with them in Quincy. And I've actually tried to get them to meet with us here to have the officers, to have all officers come in. It's really, it's very difficult issues. And it's non-conventional policing. And all these things go hand in hand. There's drug use, there's domestic violence, and mental illness. And it's things we haven't really dealt with before. You know, a decade ago, we just weren't seeing this. You know, domestic violence is way up, and mental health calls are way up. And, you know, the challenge is giving the officers the tools that they need to deal with these calls. And they get these calls several times a week. And I look at the reports. When I come in the morning on my desk, or I'll get a call during the night, tell me, you know, someone was holding a family at bay. You know, broke through someone's bedroom door with a baseball bat trying to, you know, kill someone. And that's an actual call.
I, please, pick up with conversation.
On the drug opioid problem and so forth, there's been a lot of the news about the police chief in Gloucester, I think it is, who's initiated a program where, I guess, people can come in, turn in their drugs and paraphernalia, and maybe get some kind of treatment. And he seems to think it's been fairly effective. I think also Walsh, in Boston, they're thinking of implementing a similar thing. So what is your view on that kind of a program? Would it be applicable to, have you thought about it for Cohasset?
I'm open to any of these ideas, for sure. And again, you know, like I said before, it's not something we're going to arrest our way out of. And anything that helps it, you know, these are clearly health issues as well. These people are, you know, they're crying for help. And, you know, it is our duty to help them, if we can. But it's definitely something I'm open to.
Last time you were here, we discussed the amount of female patrol people that are officers on the force, and there weren't any. And so what progress have you made? What's your view on getting us more female officers? And I noticed it's in your SWAT analysis also, but could you give me an update on what you've been doing on that?
Sure, sure.
I noticed Noel's hired a female one officer, I think, a few, a month or so ago.
We just hired a special police, a female special police officer right around July 1st. And that's in addition to the female special police officer that we already have. You know, the next hire, I'd like to call for, we don't have any openings right now.
Right.
But if we do have an opening, I'd like to call for what's called a protected list from civil service. As it stands right now, there is no females on our civil service list at all.
Uh-huh.
There's none. It's not even an option.
I'm surprised because the military, a lot of women are going into the military and so forth, and going into combat roles. Seems, I don't know, I don't know a lot about this area, but I just, I guess, you know, what concerns me is, you know, as we've talked before, over half the population are females.
Sure.
And certainly, it seems logical. Particularly, I'm thinking also of these school children, the school-age people and so forth. It seemed to me female role officers and people. I think you share the view. I'm just wondering, from what I understand you. But I just wonder what progress, you know?
We just had, and civil service just gave a test. They only give it every two years. We just had a test back in April, and the results are due in October. We did some recruiting, advertising, if you will, on Facebook and sent out some notices and things like that, encouraging females to apply. So it'll be interesting to see if any show up on our list that are residents or even non-residents in October. So it's, you know, I have my fingers crossed.
You do, yeah.
And if none do, there's a mechanism where we can call for a protected list, but there's several groups we have to jump through and provide a lot of statistics.
I notice, I'm looking at the audience, I assume you've managed that this coverage of police force in town tonight?
I did, I did.
The streets are covered somewhere.
There are four more cruisers out there.
In the row, I don't know.
I think it's wonderful to see everybody here and turn out, turn up from the police force is very, it's good to see that. And we're a small community, and where you are and being present and showing up for things and, you know, makes a statement and doesn't go unnoticed, and it's just part of what makes Cohasset special, I think.
Sure.
I've read all the materials that were sent. And I came in, I looked at the background material, Mr. Chair, and reviewed everything just so that you know, and I'm ready to make a decision.
Thank you. Karen?
I've been asked to keep my comments to process and procedure this evening. So I have two questions for you, one of which I know you've been advised of. The first question I have for you is, I previously expressed concern that the path that brought us here this evening may have undermined the authority of the town manager and also the integrity of the command structure and the reporting authority between the police chief, the Cohasset Police Chief, and the Cohasset Town Manager. Given those circumstances, what are your views on the reporting structure? Are you reporting to the town manager or to the Board of Selectmen?
I report to the town manager. It's never been a question in my mind at all.
Thank you. The second question, which I know you've had some time to craft a response to, is while the people that are here this evening are evidence of the fact that you have support within the community, there are those people within the community who have serious concerns about your appointment as police chief. What do you plan to do as police chief to allay those concerns, any fears they might have, and to restore their trust and confidence in the Cohasset Police Department?
This is the first I've heard that question. I haven't crafted any response. It's literally the first time I've heard this. All I can say is actions will speak louder than words.
I certainly hope so. Thank you.
Hiya.
Bill. A long time coming. I've been on the board since you became acting three years, three months ago. So I'm thrilled that I think we're finally at a place where we're going to have some resolution to this issue. And I want to thank you for everything you've done in three years. I think that that should allay a lot of people's concerns, if there are any left in the town with concerns. I think Bill has managed a department that is functioning very, very well and has done so for three months, three years, three months, amidst a whole bunch of political turmoil that unfortunately should never creep into the management structure of the town, but unfortunately, it does. And I think you've handled it well. I want to just bring up one little story. And I think, I really appreciate the SWAT analysis. I think it's important to recognize in a management capacity that nothing's ever perfect. There's always challenges and opportunities that you don't know are coming down the road. And usually, you think your SWAT analysis is this way, and it goes the other way. But being able to have put some of that to paper helps management move forward. And so all of that was very thorough, and I think...
It's actually very helpful for me, too.
Absolutely. And you start to, and when something happens, it isn't, wasn't on your threat thing. It might be on your opportunity, and you might just say, "Well, that's all backwards." But at least you, you know, you kind of get, you get everything out. I want to tell a story to the community. I had a call about six months ago from somebody in town whose child, twenty-year-old, had a psychotic episode. And it was a horrendous, horrendous, horrendous situation in the home for the family, for the twenty-year-old. And this dad called me, basically in tears, to thank me as a leader of the community for the incredible work that the police officers that responded to that particular home that evening, what they did, the sensitivity that they had and expressed toward the twenty-year-old and to his family was just beyond words. This man was so touched by it. And I said, "Well, write a, you know, write a letter. We need to hear these things." And I'm bringing it up now because we don't hear these things. I couldn't bring it up any other time before that would have made sense. But you have led a department for three years, and you've done it very well. And these guys, and hopefully women eventually, are out there dealing with some of the most unfortunate moments in people's lives. If the police are at your home, unless your dog got loose or they're the first responder when you set your gas grill on fire, I know that from personal experience. They see things that unfortunately, we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. And I think the leadership that you've shown over the past three years in grooming this department and letting these guys kind of go out and do their job and shine is going to very, very tremendously positive benefit to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
One-on-one, Bill. You've been here, I think, well as long as I have in town. I've seen you from patrol and all the rest of where you are now. We've had a lot of interaction professionally, personally. I did the tour of the station with you, and I came back and talked about the opiate addiction with what I see from my job. And I think that's my biggest concern, is the drugs that are out there, the opiate, the combination of that with mental illness and problems in the home, which tears apart homes. And I think that's going to be the biggest challenge you're going to face. I think you're up to it. I think the department is up to it. But it is a huge underestimated destructive problem that's going on, not just here. It's all on the South Shore. We might be a little bit insulated, but I don't believe we're that insulated. I think you're up for the job. I think that, I'm very, very delighted that you're willing to take the job because there's a lot of, it's a long time coming. Three, three and a half years as acting police chief is a long time to kind of wait it out, I guess. And I think you have the patience, the perseverance, and the drive to run the department. And I think this is an example of your support. So I have read everything, gone through all of your background. I've lived with you in town, you know, I've been in town with you for at least 20 years now. So can things get better? Sure. Will there be ups and downs? Sure. I have no reservations.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Has the board absorbed the preparation material that Chris has put forward? Is there personal individual satisfaction?
Before we vote, I would just like to make a comment, if I might. I've been very consistent since I took the seat that the appointment of the police chief is a key appointment and should be made by the permanent town manager after an independent professional assessment has been conducted. And that took place. Unfortunately, a majority of the board chose not to support the town manager's first recommendation. In my opinion, in doing so, they undermined his authority. They undermined the integrity of the process, and as a result, they've undermined the integrity of this appointment.
Is that the conclusion of your statement?
It is.
Once again, I simply refer this to the town manager. Chris, we voted in a majority to not accept your previous appointment. By the way, it's worthwhile noting that Chief Quigley, Acting Chief Quigley at the time, was one of the finalists in that process. So we would, we could fairly conclude that of the finalist candidates we have before us, a person who arrived there on fitness and merit alone. Is that right? Regardless of the process that may have, you know, where we have been, whereas we're here and I'm making this appointment, I'm making this appointment of free will, based on my authority and my responsibility. And I've talked with Bill at length, so I'm comfortable that Bill's qualified to be the chief. I wouldn't be making the appointment if I didn't. I believe that we've had a good working relationship. We continue to have a good working relationship. And I look forward to the opportunities, the challenges that we will together tackle, along with the men and hopefully women of the department as we go forward. I'm impressed with the department, with its dedication. I have been since the day I started, and I expect to continue to be. Every day, they do a job, mostly quietly, often out of sight. It's critically important for what we do. And Bill, most often, does it very quietly and out of public sight. You know, again, whether it be...
You know, again, whether it be running the adding machine tape at, you know, midnight, or, or working with an officer in the middle of the night over a very difficult call. I, I know, I, I am confident that Bill will, has been, and will be a strong chief of the town of Cohasset. And I, by the way, I also believe that our reporting mechanism is fine. Again, if I felt concerns about that, I've expressed them. We've talked, I'm comfortable, and I'm confident that Bill will be, will be everything that he's been.
And I'd like the public to recognize that each and every selectman needs to come to their conclusion independently and individually. And while we may not have unanimous votes on a regular basis, one thing that I can assure you of is that each and every selectman will have a chance to sound off, express their, their directed opinion. And while it may not be universal or universally held, it will not be silenced. And that's not directed as a comment to my colleague, Karen, but rather a general, a general comment. Having said that, I do wish to proceed and also to recognize in this that this has been an arduous process for both Chris, the community, the police department, and Bill Quigley. I'm glad to arrive at a resolution, and at this point, I would entertain a motion to accept the appointment for Bill Quigley as chief.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen tonight accept Chris, our town manager Christina's appointment, Bill Quigley to be chief of police for the town of Cohasset.
Second.
Okay. Hearing a motion and a second, I ask if there's any further discussions. Hearing done, I'd ask, I will now ask for a vote. If you can, I'd like to go by roll call.
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Karen Quigley, nay.
Steve Gomer, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schirmer, aye.
May be the first to congratulate you. All right. I just thank you very much, and that concludes this item on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, would you like, Chief Quigley?
No, yes, you can.
Okay, well, what then, in that case, would you guys get back to work?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just don't want to melt, you know, this has been recovery, the most difficult challenge, the town manager walking into town, unbelievable. What's going on with, I'm not going to rehearse it, we all know. It's got to be, you know, this has got to be a wonderful town. I think you come in to see, it's almost like a, like a movie or something. And then this has been sort of a nightmare thing in a lot of ways. It's very, it's going to be more challenging for town manager to walk into the scene. During this process, I want to emphasize, and I mean it, he has shown a high degree of professionalism, very high degree of character, and technique. Regardless of me, Christina, who's out of this process, much higher, my already high opinion. I really appreciate and want to recognize what you've done, okay?
I just want to think about, I'm prepared to do so. One of the things I wrote in my evaluation of Chris was exactly that, that he was able to not only weather, and, and sort of tempo everything properly, I think, over the past year and a half to get to know the community before the process, he went through the process. And then the process was designed properly, in my opinion, and it was executed properly, in my opinion. And he came before us, and, and the fact that he lost that vote and picked up the next day and moved on and continued leading this town and realizing that, yeah, he needed to, okay, I need to make something happen, shows just tremendous strength in management and in character.
Tremendous strength.
Ditto. Thank you.
I don't think I can craft that.
Sorry, I will say it the first time.
It takes twenty-nine years to get there, okay?
If a tree falls in the woods, right?
Would you like to echo their sentiments as well, Chris?
Well, I appreciate that. Next item on the agenda are the minutes from, the minutes from the seven twenty-eight, eight eleven, and eight nineteen meetings. Honest to God, I can't...
Give it the end of the package.
No, the end of the package is the...
Oh, no, they're right after the police chief SWAT analysis.
If I could ask again, when we have large reports like that, could they be put up on the OneDrive?
I did put them up, I put them up separately, but I didn't know, should they go in the packet as well?
It's really difficult to maneuver.
I'll do it whatever way you want, I put them on both, it's on the OneDrive.
Well, it doesn't matter.
A good, a good example is the SWAT analysis, Tracy.
Yeah.
In, you know, in the packets, it's easy to know it's there. But if it's put up separately as a, you know, on its own, we can read it in the way that it's presented. So, you know, this comes out, if you will, this comes out in portrait, reading it sideways.
Right. If you want to keep it within a meeting agenda, could you make like a folder for the, for the meeting, eight twenty-five meeting, and maybe have multiple PDFs in it? So that there, there might have been, you know, the regular business, the police thing, and then the... I'm, I'm just one person.
No, no, that's fine, I just...
No, you see, Karen makes a, a point, that the packets coming out electronically are a big benefit. Could I ask the clerk?
Come on it.
Yeah. Karen's point is well made. I, I have a hard time reading specific reports when they come out in a PDF as a total scan, because you, you know, what the office is doing is scanning the recording for, you know, for continuous record. But there are reports that are presented in a format that are intended to be read landscape, as opposed to portrait. And once we turn the, once we turn this...
No, I get that, like Paula's report, I just received the report as a PDF, so...
Yeah, there's, and I can recognize that sometimes it's just not possible. But Diane, Diane, if you don't mind...
I know exactly what you're saying, I feel the same pain, I'll talk, well, Tracy will figure it out.
Oh, no, it's, I'm going to ask the two of you to talk, because it's not worth taking a meeting time.
That's fine.
Okay, so can we move along to the minutes of July twenty-eighth?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of July twenty, two thousand fifteen, or select a meeting?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of acceptance of the meetings or reading the minutes of nine twenty-eight?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Unanimous? Move on to meeting note minutes for August eleventh.
To make a motion, we accept August eleventh, two thousand fifteen, or select a minutes?
I'll second.
Uh, any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, then finally, we have the minutes for the...
August fourteenth.
August nineteenth.
November nineteenth.
August nineteenth, meaning that is the joint, joint meeting with the school.
To make a motion, we accept the August nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, or select a minutes?
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's great. Now...
I don't know what I do officially, because I will, you can vote.
You can abstain.
You can abstain, you know.
Yeah, non-voting.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Um, all right. Next item on the agenda, uh, topic's not reasonably anticipated by the chairman in forty-eight hours. I have none. Uh, so we'll move along to our, um, motion to go into executive session for exceptions two, three, and six. Number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions in contract negotiations with non-personnel, non-union personnel. Exception number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of a public body, and the chair sub declares, I do declare, this is with respect to an update on contract negotiations with all bargaining units. And then item or exception number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. I declare that that in fact may be the case. This is with respect to the discussion of a purchase or lease for, or actually a purchase option for a lease of ninety-one Sawyer Street. The Board will come out of executive session for the purpose, and solely for the purpose of adjournment.
I think technically, I might be more comfortable if you said you do declare it to be the case, not may be the case.
Uh, if I misspoke, then I do declare it to be the case, that I, I believe that this will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body with respect to exception number six.
I have one other question. That, exception number two, which is to conduct strategy sessions for non-union personnel.
Mm-hmm.
What are we discussing?
That's in there as part of the school, an update for you on the school committee of all negotiations.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, may I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All right, by roll.
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Karen Quigley, aye.
Steve Gomer, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schirmer, aye.
We are now in executive session. Does anyone need a...